Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Terrebonne Parish Council Meeting Room. We'll go ahead and convene as the Zoning and Land Use Commission. We'll have the invocation by Mr. Billiard and the pledge by Ms. Poinson. Amen.
A pledge of the US Civil Act in the United States of America and to the code for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to go ahead and recognize we have Councilwoman Kim Chauvin and Councilman Brian Pledge here in the audience. Thank y'all for being here. Roll call, Ms. Becky?
Mr. Michael Billiard.
Here.
Mr. Terry Gold. Mr. Robbie Liner. Mr. Clarence McGuire. Mrs. Angel Poinson.
Here.
Mr. Jan Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Trevion Smith.
Here.
Mr. Barry Soudier. Mr. Wayne Thibodeau.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Conflict disclosure. I remind the Commissioners that if any time tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized, as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and is to recuse himself or herself from participating in the debate, discussion, and voting on that matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Hearing none? Thank you. Okay, I need a motion for approval of the minutes of the Zoning and Land Use Commission for the regular meeting of July 17th, 2025?
Make a motion?
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Poinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Communications?
No communications.
Thank you. Okay, item F1, public hearings, rezone from R1 single-family residential to R2 two-family residential, 127 Samuel Street, southernmost 20-foot of Lot 15 and northernmost 30-foot of Lot 16, Block E, Mechanicville, Iona L. Brown applicant. Is Ms. Brown here? Can she approach? Can you approach the podium, please? State your name and address.
My name is Iona Lyons Brown. My address is 127 Samuel Street, Homer, Louisiana.
Okay. And what are you wanting to do, Ms. Brown?
To have that resident, that location, that it's a property, changed to an R2 from an R1.
Okay. All right. Going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. First call public. Second call public. Third and final call public. I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, seconded by Mr. McGuire to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Plaskin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a requested rezone from R1 single-family residential to R2 two-family residential for the purpose of placing a mobile home on the property. The area of Mechanicville subdivision is mainly R1, but there are several lots that are zoned R2 and R3, and many of these have mobile homes on them. Additionally, several of the R1 lots have mobile homes that are legal nonconforming. In recent years, property owners have come to the Zoning and Land Use Commission to request rezones to R2 and R3 in order to place mobile homes. Due to these requests, in December of 2020, a proposed rezone from R1 to R2 was presented to the Zoning and Land Use Commission for numerous lots in Mechanicville, but it was ultimately recommended for denial after public comment. It was decided at that time to continue to review rezone requests on a case-by-case basis. The zoning ordinance states that in order to rezon the property, one of the following conditions must apply: (1) Error; (2) Change in conditions; (3) Increase in need for sites for business or industry; or (4) Subdivision of land. The applicant and staff agree the application fits under item 2, change in conditions, due to the increasing need of affordable housing in the area. The subject property is abutting in existing R2 zone districts, so the request is exempt from the minimum size requirement. All public notice requirements have been met. Staff received one call regarding the request. Staff recommends approval.
Commissioners? Need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. I'd like to offer a motion that we approve based on staff recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, seconded by Mr. Billiard. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And it'll go to council, correct? Correct, Chris?
Well, I'm sorry, what?
It will go to council now?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Item F2, rezone from R1 single-family residential to R2 two-family residential, 2620 Isaac Street, Lot 14, Block 2, Barrowtown subdivision, Onman Properties of America, LLC applicant.
Yes, Ken Rembert representing Onman. This is a project similar to the last one y'all just discussed. We want to take this and divide this certain property into R2 as well. I have some, a few missing items on this, and we'd like to continue this till next month, till the next meeting, and of course, give the general public a chance to comment on it at this time, being they came out.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and we're going to need a motion to continue?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to ask if there's anything here?
Yeah, yeah. Call of public hearing? First call public? State your name and address, please?
Okay, Brian Pledge, 125 Roselawn Avenue. And I stand before you this afternoon or this evening to represent my constituents in this community in regards to 2620 Isaac Street. I'm going to put it in perspective for you, and I'll let you guys make the decision. From there, all your notifications have been done, and I think that requires, if I'm not mistaken, a 300-foot radius from the property, where you let individuals know that either own property or have dealings with properties in this areas, in that area. Well, what we have here is an area that is, it has high crime area. There's some drugs in the community. There's shootings that go on. And beyond that, property right behind it or adjacent to this same property, the same owner owns it. All right, so to me, my constituents, they come to me and they tell me they have issue with it. I feel that they're afraid to, of course, they don't, they're not as comfortable as I am to come up here and talk about it, but I frequent this area as well. And there's been, I think the most recent shooting was May 4th. You can check the records if you choose. May 4th, there was a shooting, drug overdose just across the street. There's been numerous police callouts for various reasons. If it's not drugs, it's shootings, domestic violence, fights, things like that. And I'm just, I want you guys to understand that putting another multifamily apartment, whatever the plan is to put there, and not vetting your folks the way they should be vetted, we're going to have a duplication of what's already there now. Okay, so with that being said, it's, community doesn't want it. And we highly, as far as the community goes, they prefer it stay in R1 because they don't want to have to deal with or introduce additional issues to the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pledge.
All right.
Mr. Billiard?
I wanted to ask if there was any indication of what would be in the space in the future?
So, that's, that would be answered with the missing, by the missing documents. So, you know, reason for amendment, so why are you looking to change the zoning, development schedule, market information, and public needs? So typically, the applicant would provide that, you know, as part of the application, and that wasn't included in it, which is why we had recommended to continue the public hearing, and the applicant requested that as well.
Okay. Second call public? Third and final call public?
A motion to continue the public hearing?
I was just going to remind Jan that if y'all want to continue the public hearing to next one, then just make sure you do that through a motion, but Mr. Thibodeau was way ahead of me.
I think that's what he was.
I'd like to do that until the next regular meeting. If you would allow me, in addition to that, I would ask, well, let that pass, and then I'll have a comment.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I see her. Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please?
I'm not stating my address, but I state my name. My name is April Wallace. I oppose to them putting anything over there because the ones who bringing it there, they don't live there, and apparently, they don't give a damn. They want to come, they want to put something over there, and they don't come and visit the area, okay? They put these apartments and mobile homes and all this with these drug dealers, but they don't come out there. So if you're not going to come out there, why do you want it over there? And I don't care who's involved with it. I don't want it over there, period. Now, if they're going to bring their house over there and stay over there, then yes, bring it over there. But if you're not going to come and live there, don't bring it over there because it's just not right. We have young people growing up. We have people coming, and they raising their family over there. So these landlords, who wants to put all this stuff out there? They're not worrying about it. All they looking for is a check every month. They're not looking for nobody well-being, but they own to furnish their pocket. So I don't want it over there, period. And if I have to fight, if I got to do it all by myself, I'm going to fight till the end. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question before.
Oh, hold on, ma'am. Hold on, Mr. Thibodeau.
I know you didn't get the number, but do you live on Isaac Street?
No, I don't. I live in the area.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please?
Barbara Carter, 2619 Isaac Street. The reason why I oppose to it, I have an 83-year-old mother. We live right across the street of the said place where they want to put the development stuff. Right now, my mom is so scared to be in her house because they found two bodies next door at a crack house. So we don't know what they're going to put there, what kind of people, you know, that's going to be coming in that area, you know? So that's why I oppose it, you know, and I just hope that y'all can take all of that into consideration, you know, because I'm 65 years old. I don't want to stay over there no more. I'm about to move. So like I said, just take all of that into consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Third and final call public. So we need a motion to.
I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing, one, based on the developer's request, and two, as we try to solicit and hear more from the community. So council, if there are some other people who are willing to come, I would encourage them at the next regular meeting to please come. I'd also like to ask if you would maybe get some crime data from the Homer Police Department, if you have some for Samuel Street, which we just approved, and maybe in the area of Isaac Street. If there is any data that you can provide for me, I'd like to see what it looks like.
You can do both if you want. You can, your motion to continue public and the item.
Then if that's in order, then I would like to include.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau. Seconded by Mr. McGuire. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G1, new business planning approval, establish a church in a C2 general commercial zoning district, 1132 Barrow Street, Lino Mendoza applicant. State your name and address, please?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Lino Mendoza, and I bring the motion, live in 171 Cleveland Street, Homer. That's 70363. I brought, I'm bringing the motion of settling in one of the four spaces rented at 1132 Barrow Street. And it's for a small church. We're just beginning, and there's 40 chairs, 40 to 50 chairs spaces there, and it doesn't need any renovations. Just, we're just bringing the word of God, a Bible-based church.
Got to open it. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open for a public hearing? Right? No? No public hearing? Okay. Okay. Okay, anybody, anybody in the audience want to address this issue? Okay, Mr. Plaskin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting planning approval to establish a church in a C2 zone district located at 1132 Barrow Street. The zoning ordinance requires churches or religious assemblies that are to be placed in C2 zone districts to receive planning approval. The building suite is 900 square feet and can accommodate about 40 seats. 13 parking spaces are required under the zoning, but with only four being provided. The applicant would have to arrange for more parking, whether through acquiring adjacent property or a possible shared parking agreement with neighboring properties. Extra parking on site would be available if church services are being held when the neighboring businesses are closed. The proposed church is appropriate with regards to transportation and access, water supply, waste disposal, fire and police protection, and other public facilities. The use would not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard unless there are parking all along, along Barrow Street, and appears to be in harmony with the orderly and appropriate development of the area. Staff recommends approval of the planning approval application conditioned upon the applicant satisfying the parking requirements prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued.
Okay. Commissioners? Mr. McGuire?
What time will your services be?
Services are from 10:00 to 12:00 every Sunday.
Every Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Are those businesses, they're not open on Sundays?
They're not open on Sunday.
Okay. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, yes, sir. How are you going to resolve the parking issue that was observed by the staff?
Yes, sir. There, in the back of the building, there are additional parking lots. We have the parkings open due to the businesses are closed except one, which is in the far end, and it's just a small store. So we have a parking lot at the back of the building.
Yeah, you were done? You had time?
Yeah, I'm done. Yes, sir. We have basically around eight to 10 additional parking in the back of the building, which are not being used at that time, between 10:00.
Yeah, eight would not put you there, but 10 would.
Yeah.
Plus 13.
Yeah, it's going to be like four in the front.
All right.
And around eight in the back, or 10, somewhere around there.
Or nine. Call it good, call it good with nine.
How are we going to satisfy that observation, Mr. Director?
So when they apply for their, when they apply for their certificate of occupancy, part of the zoning approval that Becky would be doing would be looking for some sort of parking plan, like a formal plan that shows, okay, four here in the front, and these are where the nine spaces in the back are going to be. Now, if it's a shared part, if they have to go with an adjacent property for a shared parking agreement, then we just ask that they provide something to us in writing from that property owner, saying that so-and-so has my authority to park X number of cars.
Such as an adjacent business, you say, here's my letter.
Right. We do it quite often. It's very common.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So the, there really is no on-street parking along that section of Barrow, I don't believe. This is across from Blue Water.
Yeah, but on Dasper Street, on the backside, where they're talking about.
Right, but he wouldn't be able to count that towards his off-street parking requirement.
That's fine. All right.
Okay, any other commissioners? Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, okay. Have a motion? Yeah, motion by Mr. McGuire, seconded by Mr. Thibodeau. Approval per staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So there's been, it's brought to my attention that September, we're probably going to have to change the meeting date. So in order to discuss and possibly vote on it, we just need to add it on the agenda. So it's just going to take a motion a unanimous second so that we can add on the ability to move the September date, and then we'll do the same thing for the Planning Commission as well.
All right.
Will we have to do that again in the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Just reminding y'all in case I forget.
Okay, so I need a motion. Yeah, a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Billiard to add to the agenda, seconded by Mr. Soudier. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So.
Yes, so, okay, so the meeting date would normally have been September 18th. That's the third Thursday of the month, and I will be at a American Metropolitan Planning Organization conference. So I'll be out of town that day. When I booked that trip, I had a planner, so I thought BJ would be able to cover for me, but Jefferson Parish stole him. So, and we are looking for planners, by the way. At any rate, normally, we would move the meeting date back a week, but unfortunately, the following week, Becky is out of town, and I believe, Mr. Rogers, you are as well. I'm not sure about the rest of you. So in this instance, we're looking to pull the meeting date up a week. So instead of being September 18th, we're looking at September 11th as the potential meeting date. That's the second Thursday in that month, which, for those of you in the audience who routinely submit items to the Planning Commission, that would also, you know, adjust the application deadline. I believe it would make the application deadline this coming Monday, the 25th of August. So. So now that Chris has explained it, just open it up to the public in case someone would want to discuss it.
Okay.
Just regular, 1, 2, 3.
Okay. Any people from the public would like to address moving the meeting date or have any questions on that, moving that meeting date to September 11th? First call? Second call public? Third and final call? Motion to close by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Poinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I was going to motion to.
And then.
Improve the meeting date? If that's what y'all want to do.
Need a motion to approve the meeting change.
To the 11th?
11th. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Billiard to move the meeting to September 11th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Staff report?
That was it.
Okay. Commission comments? Any commissioners? I have no comments. No public, any public comments? Need a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Billiard, seconded by Mr. Smith to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Yep, go ahead.
No, you're right. I guess that class never made it, that Nichols class. Too much rain. I have, it's on the parish's GIS map, if you can get to the internet.
And I didn't want to minimize the power plant. I couldn't find it on my phone.
I mean, on the parish's GIS. Oh, you know something? This is the one that Brooke created for me. It may not be on the public one. I know, but on the public one. This just came up. I have it, yeah, but I was asking Joan, because I was. I was surprised. See, I just find it very odd that this whole area is carved out. That's what I was asking Joan, is Pointeche in that zone.
Doesn't look.
But it's not according to this line.
Not according to the map. It's carved out.
Just Pointeche.
Just Pointeche.
And, you know, Upper Montague.
Yeah.
I know, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't look right.
It goes up and then, and then.
I did text her.
Okay.
She hadn't, she didn't.
She was texting me.
Want to show it, Beadle?
Yeah, she says should be.
He has a question for Chris, but Chris is working.
Brooke said that.
This, whatever. What did Jen ask for this for?
On the map tomorrow. We just got a letter, no, but.
Okay.
Oh, got it. But it doesn't apply. Yeah.
Very strange.
Yeah. I didn't know his answer. I wanted Chris to confirm. Yeah, yeah. I think it's fine, but I don't want to say it, and then Chris.
Angel and Kim and I, is if we add a statement, and by the way, if we add a statement like under scope, except for locations in the South Terrebonne Development Zone, this, this, this statement says these regulations apply parish-wide.
Yeah.
But if we say, except for locations in the South Terrebonne Development Zone.
That excludes it.
That excludes all of the lower bayou.
Yes, everything in the, everything right there, yeah.
Everything in that shaded area. But Joan, Joan thinks it should be.
That's a wrong map, and that's a wrong map.
She thinks, she says Pointeche should be in that zone, but I'm looking at it.
But should be like she thinks it should be, or there's an error.
She thinks there's an error in the map.
Got it. Okay. So we'll confirm.
But none of us can do anything about that.
Who's in charge? Who knows that answer?
Brooke is our GIS person. Right, it's not going to, again, tonight is, this is not passable as in its current format anyway. So it's got to go back to, you know, to the committee to finalize and formalize this.
Today's a lot for public and discussion and revisions.
Yeah. To Ms. Becky in the. You need to apply for a certificate of occupancy. You did? Okay. Okay, all right, yeah, so bring her that letter.
Hey, Barry, how long did it take you to get here today? Check it off. Oh, he didn't hear me. He didn't hear me.
Yep.
Hey, how long did it take you to get here today? Hey, hey, how long did it take you to get here today, the roads were closed? Yeah? You think I'm just turning around, going out at night? You know what you should do, you should do like me and just work down the street.
Let me zoom out.
I was just, I was a block away.
See what I'm talking about.
Walked on over.
See?
It will not affect the people who are here tonight who are upset about it, but.
Probably.
But it all depends on if the map is correct.
Well, okay. Watch, I'm gonna toggle it, off, on, right?
He didn't start the meeting.
That's Montague, so you got Lower Montague, Chauvin, Dulac, Dulard, all in the South Terrebonne Development Zone.
And does that have anything to do with what the engineers sent out? I don't even know if you've seen it yet.
I haven't seen it. So.
It would just, it's just gonna be loud.
Say, okay, well, this applies to all locations in the parish, except for locations in the South Terrebonne Development Zone. Then all these RV parks in the lower bayou areas. It wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't apply to them at all, whether they, it just wouldn't apply. So they can expand, they can do whatever.
I don't know when they plan to start back up, but I'd be curious to ask these, these gentlemen who are here if they're in. That would be my only question for them.
Yeah, this just came up right before the meeting started, so.
Cool.
It's a good idea.
We good? I think we're good.
So what we'd have to do is, is look into that.
That little corner.
See how it's just a weird carved-out shape, that doesn't make sense.
I've seen weird carved-out things like that before.
That just looks strange.
I'm sorry?
Looks a little jerry-mander, doesn't it?
Okay, we're gonna convene as the Regional Planning Commission. We'll have the invocation by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. McGuire.
Lord, we thank you this day, we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your mercy in our lives. Lord, we ask that you bless this deliberation, and we pray that what we do and what we deliberate on is beneficial to Terrebonne Parish. And God, as we enter into the peak season of Hurricane two thousand and twenty-five, we ask and pray for your coverage of Terrebonne Parish in its entirety. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Kim Chauvin in the audience tonight, thank you for being here. Roll call, Miss Becky?
Mr. Billiard?
Here.
Mr. Gold? Mr. Liner? Mr. McGuire? Mrs. Poinson? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Soudier? Mr. Thibodeau? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Conflict disclosure? I remind the commissioners that at any time tonight, a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and is to recuse himself or herself from participating in the debate, discussion, and voting on that matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Seeing none?
I'm not sure the answer to this, I was just gonna say, just a reminder, at the end, when we're discussing RV parks, if any of you guys own an RV park in Terrebonne Parish, you should probably recuse yourself from that matter, but besides that, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes of the zoning and land use, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes for the planning commission of regular meeting July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five? Got a motion by, by Mr. Soudier, second by Ms. Poinson, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries, Mr. Soudier?
And the Trashers Report for July twenty-twenty-five?
Got a motion? Got a motion by Mr. Soudier, second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Communications?
Yes, sir, um, got a couple, um. First one pertains to item G two. This is, uh, tabled old business, old business item, Norman Billiard property. This dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a quest to allow the above item to be removed from further consideration. Thank you sincerely, Ken Rembert. So they withdrew, withdraw that application.
Alright.
Yeah. The next one is item H one. It's an email dated Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Becky, please allow this email to serve as notice that I'm requesting to table item H one, re-division of parcel E belonging to KMA Home and Land LLC on tonight's planning commission agenda until next month's regularly scheduled meeting. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, sincerely, Elisa Champagn, so. That'll be September eleventh, so make sure she knows.
I need a, I need a motion to table item H one.
Before we do that, may I ask a question? And I know we moved on, but.
Push your button.
I know we moved on, but this is a, this is a regular formal meeting of the planning commissions. Item.
G two?
Two. Requested that it be removed by the owner, and it seems to me, a formal motion would be required to, to be compliant with his request, a person's request. So, I, you know, I know Ms. Becky said no motion needed, but it seems like there would be one needed. That's my comment, thank you.
They withdrawn their application.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, yep.
No, I'm just asking for a legal opinion.
There you go, thanks, Jan. So, the way they phrased it was, they're requesting withdrawal, but you don't request withdrawal because they're just not gonna do anything left on, it's more of a notice to us that they're withdrawing. So, say, say the motion didn't pass, they're still withdrawn, you know? So a motion's giving them permission to do something, but if y'all deny their motion, they're not gonna be stuck in the process. So you can, you can make a motion so that it's clear that they're withdrawing, but it's not like we're allowing them to do it. They're just doing it and they're letting us know, and they just phrased it in a way passively kindly to Chris about, you know, please let us withdraw our application.
So it's not synonymous with the guy who says, I don't wanna deal with it tonight, I'm withdrawing it tonight, put it on next month.
He's just tabling it, but he needs our permission to table it, 'cause he wants to come next month. But the guy withdrawing, he doesn't, there's nothing we can do, he's, he's not coming forward anymore.
And so when the public reads the minute, it'll just show the letter of withdrawal.
Becky?
Yeah, it's gonna be attached.
Okay.
He read it into record, it's gonna be attached.
Okay.
And attached to item F, communications.
Alright.
So, yeah, in communications, it'll show that they withdrew.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We didn't make a motion, did we?
Yeah, we, we had a motion by Barry, I think, you made the mo-
We made them?
Yeah, we, a motion by, uh, Barry, and I don't remember who said, uh, okay, second by Ms. Poinson to table item H one. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries, table. Can I need a motion to take old business off the table? Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Thibodeau to remove old business from the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item G one A, subdivision track one, raw land division of the Neo subdivision into lot one, the Neo subdivision, Eagle two dry dock facility, process D minor subdivision. And a call for a public hearing? First call, public? Second call, public? Third and final call, public? A motion by Mr. McGuire to close? Second by Ms. Poinson, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to convert a raw land tract for the purpose of building a dry dock facility. The proposal, proposed lot layout configuration meet parish subdivision regulation standards for development. Fire hydrant has been installed, uh, Terrebonne Parish Engineering has issued an approval letter. All utility letters, except for the Department of Health, have been submitted. Staff recommends approval on the following conditions. Uh, number one, the September seventh, twenty-twenty-three FEMA firms need to be depicted on the plat. The municipal address for lot one needs to be depicted on the plat. The signature block needs to be corrected to, to change to second by to four, and then, uh, su- submission of the approval letter from the Department of Health for the treatment plan.
Is a developer here for that? Okay. You wanna, you wanna come up and state your name and address, please?
Ty Westerman with DDG three-one-four East Bayou Road, uh, we're just here on behalf of the client.
Okay.
Sea level construction.
Okay, first call, public? I think we did that.
Yeah, it's, this has been tabled since March.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been tabled for a while, okay. Got a motion to close the public here?
They closed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, motion, yeah, motion to adopt? Okay, a motion by Mr. Soudier? Yeah, yeah, he did.
No.
Second by Ms. Poinson, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries, thank you.
That's, I was confused too. It's just been tabled. It wasn't tonight, just to be clear, I was just told, the public was. We were waiting for the fire hydrant to get installed. It wasn't continued, the matter was just tabled, that's why we didn't just, I was confused, I thought I lost my mind.
Item H two, subdivision of property belonged to Tyler Abair, creating parcel A and parcel B, being a part of lot four A, Ellen the Brothers subdivision, process D minor, six thirty-nine, Highway fifty-five, Montague, Terrebonne Parish, council district nine, Montague Fire District, developer Tyler Abair, Delta Coast Consultants. Anybody here with Delta Coast? Name and address, please?
Prosper Tupe's, six thirty-one, South Hollywood Road. Uh, Mr. Tyler Abair would like to, uh, subdivide the bachelor from his main parcel. He has, uh, one of his relatives wants to buy the bachelor to dock his boat there. We're asking for variance in the size, it's gonna be for docking and mooring purposes only. We have a fire hydrant within the required distance. We have the utility letters, we have the addresses, and we're asking for a motion to approve the subdivision.
Okay. Open it to a public hearing, first call, public? Second call, public? Third and final call, public? I have a motion by Mr. Soudier to close? Second by Mr. Billiard, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Blaskin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, it'd help if I had a file in front of me. Okay. Okay, um.
We'll forgive you.
That makes it easy. Uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single-family residential use. The application includes a request for the variance from the minimum six-thousand-foot size requirement for proposed parcel B. Uh, the lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards, except for the size of proposed lot B or parcel B. Uh, the applicant has placed a note on the plat indicating that parcel B is to be for docking and mooring purposes only. The Department of Health letter further indicates that no structures or sewer system be installed on parcel B. All utility letters have been submitted, drainage counts are not required, staff recommends approval. And approval of the variance, sorry, thanks.
Make a motion for approval based on staff recommendation?
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Poinson to approve her staff recommendations? Second by Mr. Billiard, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Yes?
Thanks, Jan. Um, before we go to staff report, we need to do the agenda add-on again to move the planning commission meeting as well.
Need a motion too. Need a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, second by Mr. Billiard to add to the agenda for a meeting date change? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
So Chris has already explained, same exact thing, planning commission.
So I need a motion.
Y'all wanna vote, or, go public, sorry, call it public.
Yeah, first call, public? Second call, public? Third and.
Prosper Tupe's, six thirty-one, South Hollywood Road?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think, uh, Chris deserves to go on this conference, and I think Becky deserved a vacation. So, as part of the public, I would recommend that y'all approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Tupe's.
God bless America.
God bless America.
God bless America.
There we go.
Okay, I need a motion.
That's Chris.
Need a motion to.
To ca- to close public.
Last call, public?
Yeah. Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. McGuire? Second by Mr. Thibodeau, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. You wanna make a motion for the meeting change?
Make a motion for the meeting change?
Okay.
To September eleventh.
September eleventh? I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, second by Ms. Poinson? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All appo- all opposed, motion carries. Staff reports.
So we have, um, the, uh, annual APA Louisiana Chapter Conference is in Lafayette this year um, on October ninth, um, well, eighth, ninth, and tenth, really. Um, and, you know, certainly something to take notice of is the planning commissioner training will be held on the tenth. Uh, that's a Friday. Um, so for those of you who, uh, have yet to take it, or if any of you would like to get a, a refresher, um, you know, it's certainly worth the, the trip. I will, I have a, the ASLA conference the same week, uh, in New Orleans, so I won't be going to the APA conference, but certainly I'd recommend you guys, uh, if you're interested. And the fees are seventy-five bucks. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're, you're, as, as a planning commissioner, you're a member, so. Yeah, it's a pretty good price for.
Alright.
Three day, well, two day.
I don't know, is there an, an agenda out?
Yeah. Maybe, can you circulate that invite to everybody and then, you know, you could just click on the click here button and see the agenda?
Okay.
And they have hotel information, right below it too.
Yep. Okay. Item J, administrative approval? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I think we still need to approve, should any commissioner desire to go, we need to approve that. So I'd offer a motion that we approve, uh, commissioners attendance, should they desire to go that way.
Capping it, or just as many as like?
I'm sorry?
Are you, are you a cap, or just as many as?
As many as wanna go, yeah.
I have a motion by Mr. Th-
Seventy-five bucks?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Got plenty more to clear.
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau? Second by Ms. Poinson? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Administrative approvals? I have a motion by Mr. Billiard to approve administrative approvals J one through ten? Second, second by Ms. Poinson? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Committee reports, subdivision regulation review committee, public hearing? Anyone wishing to?
Gotta read the rest of it, sir.
Discussion of possible action regarding proposed RV regulations, RV park regulations? Yes, sir, state your name and address. Gene Milford, fifteen thirty-eight Polk Street, here in Homo.
Gene Milford, fifteen thirty-eight Polk Street, here in Homewood. Uh, I have, do have a letter to, um, I'm gonna give to, uh, Chris and y'all a few, before I begin, and then I'll paraphrase rather than reading the whole thing.
That's acceptable? Sure.
Yeah. This is something new.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I had an extra one here. Uh, thank you and good evening. Um, I've been asked to speak on behalf of a number of, uh, concerned citizens regarding these RV park regulations that are being, uh, considered. Um, this is a lengthy letter. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Uh, it's there for you and go into the minutes. Uh, I will try and paraphrase, uh, a number of portions of it to help move things along. Uh, last month, there was, um, I believe a rushed attempt to send some proposed regulations, uh, to the council for their consideration. Uh, fortunately, there was a commissioner that had foresight and, uh, the wherewithal to, um, have these, these tabled before they moved on. As our understanding is, to date, there has not been an eloquent articulation of any sound reason, uh, or problem why the planning commission is needing to adopt new regulations and is landing on what can only be described as arbitrary and capricious RV park regulations. The only premise here to date, uh, to adopt these regulations as, as they are, is that the parish does not have RV, RV park regulations. Mr. Chairman, uh, please be advised that we believe this premise to be incorrect. The planning commission, the people would argue, does in fact have regulations, and to illustrate that, I'll offer the following for consideration. In chapter seventeen, the mobile home and residential building parks, Article two, Division one clearly defines a recreational vehicle. And that definition, you will find about what are the different pieces and parts. The only thing that you will note in here, in the last part of the sentence, is that the, the RVs are ex- not excluded from here in the same way modular homes are excluded, and the only differential basis is based on their habitational uses. Later, you'll see in Article two, Division two, that's the, the process for adopting parks, which is the four, four-step process. Article two, Division three lays out construction requirements. Appendix four, the subdivision regulations, chapter twenty-four point seven, standards for development, essentially covers all the same things. And if you'll notice in section seventeen, there's Article three, which is what separate out in the definition of the mobile homes, uh, is the residential building park, and that's because it is not a structure that has a permanent chassis to it, which a mobile home and a recreational vehicle does, is a modular or, uh, permanent stick-built type home where you're putting multiple structures on a lot. We believe, the, the concern believe that, uh, the permanent RV parks or proposed RV parks are not at issue. Um, and I'm informed down in Montague, there are some three hundred and seventy-nine RV, uh, units down there. Only fifty or so are actually in an RV park. That means the remaining three hundred and thirty part, uh, RVs are just scattered throughout the Montague area, not in an official park. Um, it is our understanding that any of the issues that these proposed regulations, none of them would be addressed, of whatever the issues are, again, because they have not been articulated what the problem is. Uh, certainly doesn't seem to be any specific emergency that could be articulated.
The moratorium of the council approved.
The three minutes of that, they want to extend it?
Motion to extend. I have a motion to extend by Mr. Billiot, second by Ms. Thibodeau. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
If I can. Um, uh, if there's any particular concerns the parish has, it'd likely be with, um, non-conforming land use of people operating RV parks that aren't authorized. And it seems to boil down to the actual enforcement of the existing rules that the parish has, such as in chapter fourteen, Articles eight and nine, Sections fourteen, one eighty-six, uh, was previously discussed, as well as a section of state law, the revised statute thirteen, twenty-five, seventy-five blighted and abandoned properties, which also talks about building codes. So I do, we do believe there are a plethora of rules that the parish does have to address any particular issue that may exist if it was articulated, and since it hasn't been articulated, we're not sure why this is here. Let's skip that section.
RVs are typically.
He's out of time.
Yeah?
It's, um, the, sorry, the extra time is one minute.
Oh.
Yes.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and second by Ms. Poinson to extend his time? All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
It's another one minute.
Okay. Um, the big difference between mobile homes that are on a fixed chassis and a recreational vehicle that's also on a fixed chassis is whether or not they're intended for long-term or short-term habitation. That's really the difference. Our recreational vehicles in short term are intended to remain travel-ready at all times, unlike a mobile home, which is on blocks tied down. You can remove the trailer hitch, but skirting and those sorts of things is meant for long-term habitation. Recreational vehicles are not. Uh, this is a critical, because the FEMA have, community habitation compliance codes, there may be some violations or problems with NFIPA, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, and temporary housing units from time to time can be extended by executive order. The last one, I believe, expired April of this year. So anyone who's still currently in a.
Recreation vehicle, May. Motion extend?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Thibodeau, second by Mr. Suley to extend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Yeah, he's doing it for, he's representing with six people.
Um, you know, there may be a, a non-compliance of a number of other issues, not, again, back to, uh, these RV park regulations, none of which would address. Um, earlier, I mentioned that some of these would be considered arbitrary and capricious, so I would point out a few items, such as like the minimum lot size, uh, the thousand-foot setback from existing and commercial, uh, subdivisions. That's, that's essentially zoning. And from what I understand, there was a, a prior court case that, that was, the parish was found in, uh, Wrong Inn, within trying to set injection well setbacks of one mile from residential residence. Landscape requirements, that too is zoning. Density requirements, size limitations that are placed on parks, but no other business. Um, fortunately, I do believe the retroactive compliance has been removed. Um, the other question is, since we still don't know why we have an issue, why is other commercial inventors, uh, such as like pig farms, boatyards, cement plants, weldings, uh, car repair, daycare facilities, why don't they have these same type of issues? Um, you know, every time that the parish has looked to put zoning out in the parish, they've been told resounding no, and this has happened over numerous administrations. A lot of these regulations wind up being the alter ego of zoning. The government should focus on finding ways to remove the barriers and lower housing development and living costs, such as utilities, flood, and hazard insurances for the citizens, uh, in the parish. You know, and working out these, these regulations, you know, no proposed regulation should be sent to the council unless the regulation is fully supported by commission in its final form. I listened to the council at length on the, from the July thirtieth, and it was very much they were expecting, if anything, completed regulations ready, essentially ready to go. Should not be sending it to them and expecting them to figure out all the details and, and work through all the hash items that need to be resolved. And that, that boils down to the, you know, just, just simply being arbitrary, throwing things in there and seeing what sticks. Zone near repairs. Anyway, I'll try and wrap up, because I'm running short on time again. Uh, for these reasons and many others, Mr. Chairman, uh, we respectfully request that you recommend to the council to lift the parish-wide moratorium and acknowledge that RV parks are included in section seventeen. Do you have any questions?
No questions? Thank you, Mr. Milford.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public? State your name and address, please.
Yes. Kim Chauvin, fifty-two forty-eight Bayou Side Drive, uh, Chauvin, Louisiana. I sent to each of the commissioners, um, a questionnaire, and a lot of it was so that as a council person, that I could get this information, because I'm assuming that you've, you've, um, come up with the draft, and, uh, these are important questions, so that we can make a good decision. And Mr. Wayne Tupe's, uh, uh, Mr. Wayne Thibodeau, I, um, want to thank you for sending in the questionnaire, because it was extremely opening to understand what this was, but let me tell you some of them. I wanted to understand how many RV parks we have in Terrebonne Parish. How many are we going to, um, stop from expanding by going into this, these regulations? I look at, as a council person, as these businesses, as pouring into our parish, investing into our parish. And then I also look at if that RV park is by a neighborhood, what will be the problems? Drainage, because we have drainage issues everywhere. But if you're in the Bayou area, you don't have that same issue. You know, when you're in Coquetry, when you're in Ponte Dame, Montague, um, do large. So blanket ruling things doesn't work for me, and I'll tell you why. I come from the shrimping industry. Nothing ticks me off more than a blanket ruling. It means that you haven't really thought out what this is going to do to these businesses, and so as a person who owns a business, I really tried to find out what, where it came from, what is really needed and what is not needed. And going through this, I spent like the whole entire week spending many hours looking into this. So I wanted to know how many RV parks, how many are located or adjus- adjacent to established neighborhoods, uh, rural areas in the city? Um, do we have a registry or a list of the RV parks, their acreage, the number of spaces that each one holds? If I'm not getting this information, how do you expect me to be able to vote on this as a council person? I want that information. That's important stuff. Um, what's the average number of RV spaces per acre under current pre-regulation conditions? Uh, did the planning and zoning department or the regional planning commission complete a cost analysis comparing RV park operations before and after implementation of the proposed regulations? Are we going to kick down businesses? Because if we do, that sales tax comes in, and that pays for a lot of what we do. And if we take away businesses, then who's gonna pay? So that's another way to kind of look at this. How many RV park owners have been involved in the drafting process? That's a problem for me. I think that they should have been involved in it. I think that neighborhoods that are having an issue with this should have been involved in this. These are important things. People should have their say. Um, have surrounding homeowners or neighborhood association been engaged in the input also? Why is the density limit set at eighteen sites per acre? Why is it, why is it set? I want a clear explanation of it, so that I can vote on these types of things. Have there been any documented instances where existing RV parks have contributed to or caused neighborhood flooding? Those are important things to know. What impact do you anticipate these proposed regulations will have on individuals or businesses considering, uh, the development of a new RV park? I mean, I know of some that have RV parks that are not going to develop more. They're not gonna develop more of what the land that they have. That's a problem. Um, I want to know, have the potential impacts of these proposed regulations on the business communities, tourism industry, and the current RV park residents been taken into consideration? And have y'all removed the hundred and day, hundred and eighty-day maximum occupancy limit in any RV park? Is that going to be removed? These, these are really important things to know, so that we can vote on these things and understand what RV park, um, businesses are going through compared to what the neighborhoods are going through. And I knew that we talked about, um, probably make an exception at the South Terrebonne Development Zone, but I need a clearer picture of that map. What is, where does it start at? And are we gonna walk into zoning businesses in unzoned areas? These are all things that I would like to know as a council person before I make those votes, and I really would like the neighborhood people and the RV park owners to have their say, uh, in those, uh, in those parts of it. I read through this thing, and I'm telling you, it was the landscaping. So you're gonna landscape in Coquetry? When high tide comes in the saltwater, just eats it up? You know what kind of cost that's gonna be to those, to those individuals, to those business owners? Who's gonna pay for that? What incentives are you giving these RV park owners that are already there that you're gonna now task them with? Signage. It's here to there, and you're in your car, highway's right there, you know to stop. You know, so some of these things really have to be thought about before we start imposing those things. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Name and address, please.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. My name's Kevin Belonge, three-two-three Highway fifty-five, Burg, uh, Burg, Louisiana. I, I can't, I couldn't have said it better than Ms. Chauvin did tonight. You know, I've worked in government for thirty-eight years, and I, I actually have the pleasure to work with a, a few parishes around here. And I think that over the thirty-eight years, I probably have witnessed maybe eight moratoriums throughout all the parishes. All of them having reasons, critical reasons, drainage, water capacity, things of that nature. But I heard from this one about a month ago that we had a moratorium because we didn't have regulations. And I don't know how we could say that, because everyone who has built an RV park had regulations they had to follow. And we went into the code, and we found that there are actually res- you know, regulations. So then what is the premise of having a moratorium? Do you realize the liability that the parish has and all the costs that these people are either in the middle of doing or anticipated on doing, the revenue streams that they're gonna lose? I just read an article today, there was a winery, uh, groups of wineries in, in, uh, rural Michigan, and they were having such a hard time making it, they tried to figure out ways to be able to generate other revenues. So what they did was they started having weddings and other events. Well, the farmers didn't like it, they didn't like the traffic, so they went to the local jurisdiction, and they started imposing all sorts of restrictions to cause them heartache and, and havoc. Well, they were sued. That jurisdiction was sued, and they were awarded, the plaintiffs were awarded forty-nine million dollars. I'm not saying you're gonna be sued, but you're creating the opportunity, creating a reason. There's no justification for a moratorium. Everybody here is in favor of beautifying this parish, but the whole targeted focus of what this moratorium and the new regulations are, y'all are focusing on the wrong individuals. You heard the number of RVs in, in the south? That is real, but we all know why they're there, because they needed a place to live, and we're all for that. But why are we gonna punish the large RV parks when they are providing the space that these people may need, but we're taking that away from them? So I ask you to do two things. Tell the council that you reviewed it, you've discovered that there are regulations, and therefore the moratorium probably shouldn't have been issued, and that if you want to beautify the parish, let's look at.
The whole subdivision code and not target one inch.
Turn the clock off. I motion to continue. Extend his time.
Extend this time.
A motion by Mr. Tibado, second by Mr. Sulyer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and I'll be very quick. The thing is, you know, I think we're all here for a good reason. All of y'all serve to do what is right. And I have nothing but the belief that y'all all are going to do what you think is right. We all know why we're here. Let's not, you know, cheat ourselves of why we even doing this. Are we going to impose restrictions on individuals who have worked hard to develop their businesses because of some political shenanigans? We shouldn't be doing this. So I ask for your consideration to tell the council that you've reviewed, you've found subdivision regulations. They are in place. You want to better them? Go ahead and better them with our input. And, you know, let's, let's try to make Terrebonne inviting, not stopping people from coming. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belonge. One thing, I just want to make it clear that the planning commission didn't put the moratorium. We did. So I just...
We all know how we got to here. Everybody in this room knows why we're here tonight. But nobody has said enough's enough. We all need to say enough's enough.
Mr. Derrick? Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's not the planning commission's moratorium. I just wanted to make that clear. Public? Name and address, please.
Tim Fungi, 397 Tulip Drive, Homer, Louisiana. So I own an RV park. Also have businesses all over the parish. Also have a RV park slash convenience store that I want to build in North Terrebonne. So this does affect me monetarily. Because I've already spent a fortune to get an engineer to draw me a store, to get me a draft and to draw me an RV park, to get the environmental study for my EV plug-in cars. So I want to let you know, I will be filing a lawsuit against the parish or whoever one of y'all, and you said it's not y'all that started this. Whoever started it, I've already consulted with a lawyer. I'm tired of getting picked on. I'd have spent so much money. Y'all didn't do my RV park in Ponte Char 25 years ago. I'm 54 years old. Started when I was 20. So I spent about $5 million getting smoked by hurricanes, beat up, regulations, Suti, you live down the bay. All I do is get beat. I'm tired of getting beat. This is actually a lawsuit. Where the Court of Appeals gave, First Circuit gave the guy a couple of millions of dollars. I don't want a couple of million. I want what my daughter and my son is going to lose. My son's eight years old. My daughter's 18. My daughter's going to be a nurse. I know my son's going to be. But the shit that y'all put on this parish. And I'm saying y'all, because I'm really upset. Because I don't hear, Suti, you should be bitching about stopping, beating on little people. There's nobody's thinking, Miss Kim, thinking. She finally stood up for, you know, to buy you. We got the home nav, can't even get multimillion dollar ships in the water. And we worried about people trying to give a living. They got, I'm going to just tell you, I'm going to take, he's gone. They do got people with three RVs in their, in their little neighborhood. Guess what? They're pimping out kids in the neighborhood. Let me ring them to you. It really does happen. So you're going to shut down a business? I'm the sheriff, the preacher, the best friend, the mayor, the councilman, the district water guy. That's me. Nobody fixes my water bill when hurricane comes. I gotta spend $10,000, $20,000. 16 years ago, Mike Sobert still didn't pay my, approved my, um, my water meters. My water meters had to, I had to lift them sick, my water fire harnish, six inches because he didn't like them. They were six inches too low. They still ain't approved. That's bullshit. I'm just, it really is. And I, I'm just trying to help people. I sponsor the Wounded Wars. I bring 100 veterans down here a year. Me and a bunch of my friends, we do it for free. The Wounded Wars Association comes down here. Terrebonne Parish is the biggest tourism, the only
You want the motion?
Terrebonne Parish is the only place that the Wounded Wars Association will bring all their guys for free. Bring them to our, our marina. I don't house them. Donald Trump housed them. I bring them fishing. We got 30 boats. That's 30 people I got to house. We got 30 captains, that's 30 captains, 30 deckhands. They load up the apartments, the Marriott. They load up the restaurants. That would kill me. I need a bigger park. I got to fight with the Corps. I had to pay them $18,000 fine to put water in the land, to put mud in the land. I got smoked by hurricane. Now I'm outside a levee system that I'm right outside a levee system. I never get help, never. I'm just tired of it. I really wish I would table this or whatever. Get rid of this, whatever it is. Chris really helped us out. He told me, he said, this is, this is a thousand-foot set book. I got a piece of property. It's five acres. A thousand foot is the thousand foot that I got to start my RV. So what am I going to do? Buy my next door neighbor's property? Mike, you know, you're from down by. We all get beat up. Nobody helps, nobody helps us. You do, you help everybody. You was on ID before. People couldn't afford a lawyer. You're a great guy. Tell these guys, tell the people to stop. Stop beating up the little guy. They got people down by in Ponte Char building a teepee hut. That's a study. What you, who's going to build a hut? They're trying to live in a mobile home trailer, not a hut. They got solar panels in a hut, but they could do a study for a hut. Get kind of, you know, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Public? Public?
Lloyd Plantson, 103 LeConte Lane in Homer. I want you guys to put yourself in my shoes, although y'all are a little taller than I am. But I own a trailer park and RV park that's 65 years old. And by the large, here's my issue. We used to put house trailers at three and a half blocks high. FEMA comes along and changes the maps. And now I have to be at 10 foot above sea level. I got trailers sitting up. The first strong wind from a good storm is going to blow them over, from a good... I mean, it's ridiculous. So I couldn't fill any trailer spots up, so I started putting RVs. Now, we always had RVs for the last 25 or 30 years. But I started putting some RVs in some of my trailer spots. And the reason for it is because the council gave Bollinger Shipyard right at a quarter of a million dollar plus tax break to bring in from 300 to 500 employees. Where do you think those employees are going to stay? They all work out of RVs. The last 25 years of my work career, my wife and I worked out of an RV throughout the state of Louisiana. Took care of 105 cemeteries, traveled all over the state. And these guys coming in that's working for Bollinger and other places, they are contractors. They don't know how long they're going to be here. They, they can't sign a lease on a, on an apartment because they don't know if they're going to be here three months or they're going to be here a year and a half. I had one that stayed four months. I had one that's been there for two and a half years, go home every weekend. So they, they can't stay in a, in an apartment. And they sure can't afford to stay in a, in a hotel room. These guys go out and eat twice a day. They buy a few. They spending their money in Terrebonne Parish. This bullcrap of not being able to stay in an RV for more than six months is just that bullcrap. Because guess what happens? If we force this guy to move out in six months, he's going to Tibado. He's going to stay there for six months or a year and a half and spend his money in Tibado. So what are we supposed to do? I got a $369,000 investment. What am I supposed to do? Just shut it down? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public? Name and address, please.
Connie 48201 Mesa Mill Lane, Chauvin, Louisiana. I also own the campground. I own a couple of them. I have one in Ponte Char and I have one in Coquetry. Fencing, as we know, we have levees. You see what happens when the grass comes up with the levees? That is a nightmare. It is a nightmare with the rodents, the snakes, the debris, everything. At our expense to have to clean it in order to get back. I clean up mine in order to get my people back that paid me to stay there. It's not fair for me to wait for the government to come in with FEMA to waive my stuff to get paid for. I do it. I have people in my park that are permanent due to displacement elderly. And I'm not one to hound for the, you know, rental when the rents due. Because again, they have utilities. They're elderly. They have medicine, the whole nine yards. You know, I'm not going to, hi, rent due. You know, I don't do that. A lot of people struggle. It's struggling times right now. I've sent pictures to kill them. You know, again, we all live down. You guys see it all over the parish. You can't tell people how to live, much less where to live. You know, cost of living is high, very high. Rental is through the roof. And then again, it's hard to, to make it. You know, shrubbery, I have a fine, I have fine trees. I'm going to go around the parish, pick up old dead trees and let's start planting them because that's what's going to happen down the bay, saltwater. You know, again, my people are from out of town. Most of them are out of town. I have workers, oil field that comes in hotels. You know, they come, family comes in because you can't stay out with the campers. The kids come in, restaurants, grocery stores, fuel docks, bait, charter fishermen, the whole nine yards. You know, rooms, my brother's the same. You know, the campers too come in. And one of my other ones come from Baton Rouge, Spores, Florida, Texas. That's all coming into here. That's revenue. I pay hotel motel tax. The law was two trailers. Anything more than two is considered an RV park. Now it's going to be three. So me as a business owner, I'm paying my dues. But yet this guy can come in and put three and not have to do it? How fair is that? It's not fair. And then the same thing out of a park. You're going to Airbnb, which I think Airbnb may pay taxes, the hotel motel tax that we're required to pay. But again, if you go on your side, my light's about to go off, Becky. Want to give me two minutes?
Motion by Mr. Bill, second by Mr. Sulyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
What's the difference if I have a campground generating money in this parish? Or if you have a camp and you rent it out or camper, you rent it out? Are you going to, are they going to be paying that tax? That's keeping this parish going? Nine times out of 10? No. No. And the best way, I think I had this discussion with you, Chris, there is how, there's no way to control that. There is a way to control it. Set it up just like you did us. You know, go see it on Facebook. We have a camper for, for the rodeos. We have a camp, we have a camper. So all you have to do is book it. Give it at the end of the month. Hey, where's your sales tax? You take it out of it. And we have to start keeping up at the end of the, at the end of the bayous, Ponte Char, Montague, Coquetry's flourishing because of Benny, you know. It's the only bayou really have it, Dularge, Grand Cig. We have nothing there but fishing. People are not going to come give me a hundred something dollars a night to come stay in their own camper when you can go to Coquetry, listen to live music, have a swimming pool, splash pad, the whole, you know, entertain, everything. You think they're going to do that? It's going to hurt. There goes the bait that was here, the groceries that was on the way, the little mom and pop shop, the hardware stores. When the bridge was shut down, look how much it had an impact on us. You know, look at in Homer, you know, just right here. You know, it's, it's just, I would hope that you guys would take it in consideration. Just look at us. I mean, again, we're putting money in it. It costs us a lot of money. We're not fly by nights. We're here. I've been in business since 2007 doing this. I'm on my third phase. I just got shut down on one phase for a temporary moratorium for whatever reason. You know, I'm not, and then two, since 2007, I've done two evictions, management. It's all about management. You know, one of the guys here has a hotel, I mean, apartment complex. You know, people coming in and out of neighborhoods. How do I know what's coming in and out of your neighborhood, you know, in your apartment complex? You can come tell me about mine. We can't tell, discuss or decide who comes in and out of a neighborhood Walmart, much less who's going to come in and out of your house. You know, I mean, in RV park. I, I am an RV owner. You know, I do travel. You know? I think everyone ought to have one, especially for hurricane season. So you don't have to go on, depend on your mama, your daddy, a hotel room, your kids. I mean, it's, it's an easy cost of living. And then things are going to get bad. For COVID, a lot of people went to an RV. You never know what you have to live in. You know, most people forget where they came from. You know, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next call, public? Name and address, please.
I'm also a RV park owner. I don't do permanent spots. It's mostly semi-permanent. A lot of contractors, travel nurses. Travel nurses normally do three-month contracts. Sometimes if they do good, they extend it. And my thing is 180 days, you know? If they extend it, then what I'm supposed to do? Tell them they got to leave and they, like she said, they're going to go down the road. If I'm losing money, I hate talking up in front of people. If I'm losing money, how the hell I'm supposed to keep up with all the regulations? If I plan to add on, then I got to do a service building or this landscaping. Like they said, the saltwater, Hurricane Ida, I lost 20, 30 trees. So if I go plant all this stuff, another big storm comes, then what? I'm going to get penalized to debt because I can't do the landscaping, you know? Like they said, a lot of people come in. I got, I got an old man that comes from Canada every year. He'll spend his whole time here out the winter, six months. What I'm supposed to tell him this year? Well, you can't come, you know? Like they all said, it's hard, you know? Not every, we don't have nothing, no tourism. I mean, you know, we don't have nothing for these people to do but fishing. You know, it ain't like going to Pensacola and I can say, hey, I could charge you $1,000 a month. You got a beach, you got this. We don't have nothing, you know? We try and, we try to get people here out of our own pocket, you know? And it seems like the parish just stabs us, you know? And if we're required to do all this, you know, try to help us get some funding, you know? Something to help us out. Nobody ever came and said, hey, look, y'all need help with anything? Or pass by our RV parks? Contact us and ask us what we need. First thing we get thrown is a bunch of stuff. You know, but that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vernon, where's your RV park located?
7069 St. Christopher.
Okay, so you're down the valley too. Okay, that's what everybody's, okay.
Public? Name and address, please.
Good evening. Brandon Eber, 1319 Highway 55 in Montague. So I don't have any RV parks yet. I have apartment buildings and some businesses. And I tell you, camper people are definitely better people than, you know, apartment people. You don't have to worry about people that are RVing, very good people. But I just have a couple of questions. Like the five acre lot size? Are we, you know, 18 per acre? So we need a minimum of a 90 campers RV park? Like, who, who came up with that? Thousand-foot setback. Is it a traffic issue? So we don't want 30? So we don't want thirty campers because it's too much traffic, but we want ninety? I mean, I would love to know who wrote this, you know, and, and, and reasons behind it. It's almost like there would be somebody somewhere with a four-acre piece of property that wants to build an RV park. And somebody came up with a bunch of rules so that one particular property couldn't make the, you know, make the rules. It's, it's, and like I said, I, I don't have a whole, whole lot to say about it. But if you ask me, it's all ridiculous. And um I, I do wanna develop an RV park and, and a lot of these things are gonna prohibit that, especially being from down the bayou. I have property in Montague, I have an oyster business in Coquetry, have property in Coquetry and would like to, you know, later on, develop a nice park. You know, and I'm not against beautiful trees, it, it, it's just not, not feasible. You know, it's ridiculous. It, it's just, it's not expensive. You know, I don't think it's that expensive to plant a tree one time. Every hurricane season or, or damn southeast wind in Coquetry and you gotta drive through saltwater on the road. You know, it's just, I don't see one thing that's not ridiculous about the proposal. It's just, I really would like to sit down with somebody, you know, Chris is a busy man, he can't sit down with all of us. But to sit down with us and, and, and say, hey, who came up with this?
I'd be happy to sit down with anybody.
I mean, did y'all?
I sat down with Miss Connie, I'll sit down with y'all.
Can you an- can you answer that? Like, did y'all come up with this? This is y'all's, y'all's ideas, y'all co- y'all copied another parish or state or?
Can I?
Sure.
So this draft started in twenty fourteen. Now, for whatever reason, the council at the time moved forward with the mobile home parks and left the RVs on the shelf. In March, the planning commission asked us and the subdivision regulation, their review committee to take a look and prepare and present a draft of RV parks. That was in March. That moratorium happened at the end of July. Although the, the subject matter is the same, one has nothing to do with the other. I mean, it's not some conspiracy, okay? It's, we all know why that moratorium was put in place, but it had nothing to do with the draft of these ordinances because we started that long before all that went down. The, the way that this latest draft that was put forth on August twelfth is when we published it was a combination of the original draft and then some deletions and additions based on the comments that we got in the public hearing at the last planning commission meeting. And at that meeting, I said, if anybody has any additional comments that they wanna throw my way, get them to me by, you know, early August so that I can have time to compile them and republish this thing. And so that's what was posted and published in the backup material for this meeting. It is in no way ready to go to the council. So I completely agree with Mr. Milford in that. This is simply a combination of comments that I received from a lot of people in this room. That five acre came from Gene. I don't know where he got it, ask him. The eighteen sites or, or sites per acre is a maximum density. And that was pulled from other RV parks in the region, um, o- o- other parishes rather, in the region that have RV park requirements, but that's a maximum. You certainly don't have to put eighteen per acre. Um, but that's, that's what these regulations are, is just sort of a, a mix at this point. I mean, it's not ready. I mean, it has to go back to the committee more than likely to put a final version together to then bring back to you all, to the commission and the public before it goes to the council. So, I mean, we, this is why we're here, is to amend these and I've heard a lot of good comments and I appreciate everybody coming out. And, you know, the landscaping, I get it. That's why we put um an alternative for a fence. If you don't wanna, if you can't put the landscaping in because you're worried about tidal action or storm surge, I get it. So, you know, that's why we give the option of using a fence instead. And those are the kinds of great suggestions that I'd be more than happy to listen to.
Good. So do you agree with us that we should kill the moratorium and?
We didn't put the moratorium in. I'm not, that's a council matter, man. You gotta go to the council with that.
So, so, I mean, can you, you guys request that the council kill it?
That's up to you guys. But you, you know, you're, I don't know if your councilman, your councilperson may be in this room. I don't know, but.
No.
Okay, well, that's where I would start if I were you, is I would express that commit, that, that, that request to your councilperson.
I'm gonna text them. Okay, I'm good. Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Derek?
I don't remember anymore, honestly. There was something I wanted to remind y'all. It'll come to me and I'll, I'll get back on. I don't wanna waste.
Okay, thank you.
You'll take any comments?
Yes.
Can I go? I'll make it quick. For the last planning and zoning commission meeting.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Connie Berg. Y'all all know me. Connie Berg, fifty-nine fifty-three Alma Street, Homer, Louisiana. At the last meeting, I told y'all, keep it simple. Don't go out the box thinking all these crazy different things, scenarios. Because the pe- people feel like they've been regulated to death. And we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, okay? If we just keep it basic to basics, when a, a guy comes in the planning department looking for a permit to build an RV park, give him a set of rules that he has to provide, the base of the ground and the spacing, uh, you, you like say you could only, you only have five acres of property to fool with. So he could only have X amount of trailers on five acres. So I get that. But like I said, it's just keeping it simple and not overbearing to these people. It's up to the trailer park's owner to be responsible for what stays in his park. Not the parish council, not the planning commission. That's his to control. You can't tell people how long they can stay in a trailer. That's on them. They the ones living there, not you. And it's up to the trailer park person who owns the trailer park to manage his people, not the parish, not the planning commission. Y'all just need to simplify the rules of what it takes to build an RV park and leave these other people alone. They've been established for decades. So if anybody new coming for an RV park specifically, they should have a set of rules when they get their building permit. That's it. Other than that, you leave them alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I remember now. Thanks, Shan. Um, Miss Connie Foray-Nutberg raised her hand earlier to come back up. No, no, wrong. I was, I was clarifying which Connie, not you, Miss Connie Foray. Yes, that's, that's why I was, yeah. Um, just to clarify, what we normally do is each person gets one chance to come up. We extend it if we allow, which y'all have been very gracious to do so. If y'all have a question for any of them, then you can call them up to ask that question. But you don't, you know, it's probably not best to have everyone second and thirds coming up. But if you have a question, feel free to call that person up, ask that question and then, you know.
Okay, thank you. You need Miss Connie to come back up?
I think it's up to you guys, if y'all ask her a question or if y'all wanna hear what she had to say.
Y'all have a question for Miss Connie?
She did. Are you asking her to come back?
Ask her what you wanna say.
Then yeah, call.
Call her up. Okay, Miss Connie.
Connie Foray, two oh one Mesa Mill Lane. On the one hundred eighty days, I'm not sure about that. The one eighty, are you guys gonna make people move out? And put back again for, because then that would require going back and get another permit for electrical plumbing permit, which is again, a hundred twenty-five dollars for electrical, a hundred twenty-five dollars for plumbing. And then they have to contact Entergy to disconnect and reconnect. With, is that some, you know, I mean, and then move? So is that, again, clarified, that's gonna go away?
So the hundred and eighty days, I mean, that, that's rooted in the building code. Which is why when we issue an RV permit, we say that it's only valid for a hundred and eighty days. Um, but if you keep reading in the, uh, in the parish ordinances, if the RV is kept road-ready, then yeah, you get your RV permit and it's good. Hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty-one days, three hundred and sixty-five days. It's good as long as the RV is road-ready. The reason why that language is in there is to address when people start building decks and all these structures and attaching them and basically building onto an RV. That's where the, the building code problems come in. That's why there's the hundred and eighty days.
But we can build that. You build steps to get to your house.
But I, I think, I think what Chris is saying is if you block it up and take the wheels off, it's not road-ready anymore.
Yeah, i- if it can be road-ready, I mean, which, you know, I think most of you, I understand you've got long, you know, extended stay folks. Um, but if they're, when a storm comes, I would imagine they hook it up and they're out of there, right?
They do.
Yeah, so it's road-ready. So some of them have the steps that come out, but, but I mean, the steps are easily removed.
I'm talking about a porch.
It's um, it's when you have somebody that starts, you know, building additions and blocking it up and turning it, an RV into, you know, what it isn't meant to be. Um, it's designed, you know, for that recreational use, not as a permanent home.
Okay.
That's where that comes from. So no, we're not gonna come on day one eighty-one and say, hey, you're out.
Can I get that?
Have we ever done that? Have we ever done that?
Can I get that in writing?
I just said it. And this is being recorded.
Wait, just, just to be clear, just clarify, the hundred and eighty days is already in the building code, correct? So that's not something new that's being added. That's been the law since the building code was adopted by the ordinances and whatever year that was. So it's always been, so however you were policed about the hundred and eighty-one, eighty days is the exact same that it will, hypothetically would be in this new ordinance. It doesn't change at all.
Okay. Public? You want to go ahead and come up? Yeah, go ahead and come up.
So the moratorium was the Tim Fungy, three ninety-seven Tuladrop. The moratorium, Mr. Steve said that y'all wanted it. And y'all saying that he wanted it. I was here, Chris was there, me and Chris was arguing, was on the floor.
I, I'll help with that.
All right.
I, I don't, I don't remember that. I'm not saying it wasn't said. I just don't remember. It was a long, that was that four and a half hour meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you a break.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta live this break.
Forgive me, that was a long one.
So.
But I can say, I mean, correct me if any of you reached out to Mr. Trussler. The planning commission was not responsible for creating the moratorium.
Uh, okay, that's really good because he said.
Now, I'm not sure if any of y'all reached out to him to do it, but as far as I'm aware, the council on its own decided to pass the moratorium.
Okay, she's saying he did it. Well, he said that y'all wanted it done.
That's something. I don't wanna go back and forth with the councilmen.
No, I'm just telling, I'm, okay, so.
I, I would, I would reach out to Mr. Trussler.
Who do we get to stop the moratorium? Because right now,
The council.
I'm there and I gotta deal my wife as far as building a store. And it really ain't easy dealing my wife.
The council, the council would have to put it on their agenda. I don't know who your, who's your councilperson?
My wife's, you know.
No, who's your councilperson? Danny Bavin? Reach out to Mr. Bavin, um. You know, he's, he's a understanding councilman and see what, see, you know, voice your concerns, see if they'll take it back up. The planning commission in no way can overturn or pass a moratorium for that reason. So, I mean, that's all, you know, it's unfortunate that y'all don't have more impact on that, but y'all can only do what y'all can do.
All right, thank you.
Because everything we do has to go before the council to be ratified.
Yeah, even, even this, if say eventually we be, you know, uh, support it, then it would still go to the council and the council can do anything they want with it. They could pass it, they could deny it, they could change it into something that's not even close to what it is, or obviously they could approve it as is. They could, they could do anything. And y'all would obviously have public hearing with the council as well, so you could bring up this, these concerns with them as well.
All right. Anything else, Chris?
Ms. Kim, you have anything?
Me as we talking about it?
My cat's breath smells like cat food.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Kim?
Kim Sherbien, fifty-two forty-eight Bayou Side Drive. The only thing that I ask is that we find a balance for those RV parks by neighborhoods that drainage may be an issue. Um, I get that this, what I was told was that this came about since Water Plant Road with the RV park there, but that's a mishap between evidently the parish and the federal government because the contract wasn't written right, is my understanding. Because FEMA is supposed to put it back to pre-existing conditions and it wasn't. And then the, the subdivision or neighborhood on the side of it began to get worried. I get it, I understand it. But in the bayou areas, people come to hunt fish and crab and do those types of things. That's our tourism culture. I just don't wanna see, um, I guess, business just kinda dwindle down from that. And that's it. That's it for me. So, I mean, that's how I'm looking at it. The questions that are asked, those are questions that I'm gonna continue to ask until I get those answers. So that I can make a good decision on voting for that. I did my homework. I spent a week doing homework on this. So I, I want to make good decisions for the district that I represent and I know that other council people do too in that manner. So we're looking for answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ponce?
Um, okay, so I just wanna say that, um, we talked about the South Terrebonne Development Zone. Maybe these regulations and restrictions not affecting that area. Um, I know you said Ponte Shant is not included in that, or we don't really know exactly where the line is, but maybe we can come up with some kind of line to where, because everyone who came up to have RV, the owners of the RV parks that came and spoke were from Ponte Shant, Dularge, Coquetry, Shrimpers Row. So that's all that area. Maybe we can exclude them and oh, you said North Terrebonne, you had.
He's, he's got.
Oh, Upper Loca, okay.
They just didn't talk.
Oh. Okay. So I thought maybe Upper Loca, yeah, it would help the. Right.
I would say put it.
No, we think you gotta come up.
Okay. Well, I mean, maybe we come up with some kind of line, draw a line somewhere for the down the bayou areas.
Okay. I think, anyway. I think what Ms. Ponce is trying to say, guys, is you know, if, if there would be a way to establish an area that the existing RV park, well, any RV park would be exempt from the proposed regulations. Um, and when she brought that to my attention before the meeting, the first area that came to my mind was what's called the South Terrebonne Development Zone. And, you know, the way in the past, the biggest thing we would have when somebody comes to the planning commission with a subdivision, if it falls into that development zone, basically they're exempt from having to provide drainage calculations. Um, so that was the first thing that came to my mind. And basically, every highway, you know, that we could look at the street address and say, okay, guys, everything from this point southward is in that zone. Um, it, it does appear on our GIS map, so, you know, I can provide you guys with, you know, a link to that. But what I was noticing in, before the meeting got started is that in Ponte Shant, it doesn't show currently on the layer on this GIS map, it doesn't show. But it looks very strange how it's the, the line work here. And so I was texting with Joan Shake Snyder with engineering. And she said that the last point listed is the southern tip of the wildlife management area. So everything south of that is in the South Terrebonne Development Zone. So we'll have to get that corrected on our maps. But as, as you just, some fo- folks back here just mentioned, you know, that, that isn't, certainly not all the RV parks are in that development zone. But it would, I think for a lot of you, it would, it would be a, a, a relief from these regulations. If we were to, you know, adopt something like, or put something like that, and I'd say that that would go into section seventeen oh two. Because that's where it talks about it being all properties within the parish. All properties within the parish, so we create some exemptions for that.
Mr. Bill Yott?
Well, I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm very, uh, I'm, I'm on the subcommittee. There's three of us on the subcommittee. Uh, I would agree with Chris that the regulations are not ready to be sent to the council. So we're not going to be, uh, motioning to send them to the council. Uh, another thing is that if you are have, if you do own an RV park. These regulations will not be retroactive. So, uh, they won't affect you unless you are expanding and then only to the expanded area. Um, the, if there are to be regulations, I think as I understand from Mr. June Milford and Mr. Kim Chauvin. And others who have spoken, um, you want them to be well researched, specific to the region. And all provisions should have a reason to be there in the ordinance and not arbitrary and capricious. As Mr. uh, Milford pointed out, these current ordinances may be. So my, uh, motion is going to be that we be able to deliver at least that. At least a well-researched plan, a researched ordinance that has every single provision. Has a specific reason that can be explained. You could disagree with it, but at least it will be researched, explained, and not arbitrary. So my motion is going to be that, uh, uh, being a person who is on the subcommittee. Um, that we, since we're not going to motion, there aren't, we recognize that they are not ready to submit. Um, and, and also we recognize the passion, uh, behind all of the voices we have heard. In the subcommittee meetings that we have, there hasn't ever been a subcommittee meeting that people did not come to and voiced their opinions. And we have taken all of those opinions into consideration. As Chris, uh, pointed out, some of the provisions in the ordinance have come from some of you. In the audience here today. So there's no doubt that we hear you. And we want to implement, uh, what is good for the parish. So I think that it is evident, not only from the, uh, the people who have spoken, but also from my own experience. With, uh, hearing all of the voices within the community, that we need to take some more time with this. And my motion is going to be that, uh, w- we table this until. Not the September date, because the September date is three weeks away. But to the October date and that we, uh, schedule another meeting or two of the subcommittee. And have concrete, uh, plans, uh, to research these issues. To answer Ms. Chauvin's questions, cuz those are important questions, and we should be able to answer those questions. Uh, prior to sending it to the council. So thank you, Ms. Chauvin, for coming here today and for providing us with those, uh, questions. Uh, it will be a good framework from which to, uh, to research these very important issues that you have brought to us. So my motion is to, uh, table the. Continue the public hearing?
I, I think that's a great motion. Um, do you mind before we vote on it and we would technically, you know, we would be. Not closing this matter, but ending it for this. If there's anyone else in the public, I just don't want them to come out and then not be able to speak. And then the item be over before they get to speak on it. You know, just like we did last time, I believe, was the same thing we did. So, um, so if you don't mind, before we second and vote, just finish public. But for, remember, don't close it because of, we're motioning to continue it.
Anyone else in the public? Mr. Tibbetto?
Yeah, I, I, uh, would just like to say to the subdivision committee members, I know we're talking, talking about. There are bayous communities on Bayou Black, there are bayou communities on North Terrebonne. So I want to just carve out the bayou communities on, in the south. Because there are some small RV parks in Gibson that I know on, on the high side. And, and maybe even on the low side, as best I can recall. So if we're talking about carve outs, just do not forget about the north end of the parish or the western end. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you good with Mike's motion? Do you? And that the subdivision review committee will meet twice.
So that would probably be the fourth, I would think. I accidentally turned off the mic. That would be the fourth, right, if we're gonna follow with the Sat- Thursday before? Is that, uh, are you, are you good with that, the fourth? Well, I mean, if we're gonna stick with the Thursday before the meeting.
We gotta, I gotta look at calendars. I don't know if. Okay, so the subdivision review committee, um, is a public meeting, so I want everybody here in the audience to, to. And you're welcome to attend. It is a public meeting, and we will be publishing the, the, um, the agenda in advance. And if you wanna contact Becky or I, if you wanna make sure that you get noticed. Um, so you don't have to just keep checking our website every day, that's fine. But, um, I just, we, we can't really set those committee dates just yet. I think we all need to look at our calendars and make sure we're gonna.
And then we can, you know, we'll pu- publish it whenever we can. So, okay, we're good there. Do you need a second?
Um, just a suggestion, if anybody wants to be added to my distribution list, that they get a copy of the, um, agenda whenever I send it out.
Yeah, there. Yeah, thank you, Becky. So if you wanna be on Becky's email distribution list for agendas for. Planning commission meetings and the subdivision regulation review committee meetings, get with her after this meeting.
Mr. Tibbetto?
Yeah, I, just a question. It, it seems that we all agree tonight that the instrument that we're having the public hearing on is defective. And it's probably not gonna remain in, in the existing form, so why are we even continuing a public hearing on this? On this instrument, on this proposed instrument, who we seem to agree tonight that, that needs some changes to it.
The public hearing will just be on the revised instrument that will be published in accordance with the October meeting. So the committee's gonna meet twice. I'd love the public to join, have meetings with Chris, everything that Chris recommended. It, it'll be revised, just like it was from last meeting to this meeting. It was revised with notes. October, it'll be ideally crafted in a way that everyone accepts or. You know, I, however it's gonna go. It'll be a fin- ideally, it'll be a final draft. Obviously, things can change, but that's, so just like it changed from last meeting to this meeting, it would then again change from now to October.
Anybody else? Last.
No, public's done. Oh, yeah, but we kinda moved on from it.
I have a motion by Mr. Bill Yott to continue. Second by Mr. Sudey. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Uh, can I say something, Jan? Just to be clear to everyone that came and asked the commission about the moratorium. The moratorium is for ninety days. It went into effect July thirtieth. So that means the moratorium is only in effect until October thirtieth. Which this won't even have made it to the council by then. So there will be no new rules in the time that, that moratorium dies. It's ninety days. But it's whichever's first, so ninety days is first. It's whichever's first. Ninety days will, uh, a hundred percent happen before the council can rule on it. Because hypothetically, if this is approved October sixteenth, it's gotta hold over. Ninety days is August, September, October. So even if this is approved August, October eight sixteenth, which I'm not saying it will be. It still wouldn't make it to council by the thirtieth.
And actually, the, the ordinance, the meeting where the moratorium was voted on, the regular council meeting was the thirtieth of July. But the ordinance itself wasn't signed by the parish president until August sixth. So it's ninety days from August sixth.
Of signature, or it, two thirteen in the code, but yeah, he signed it on the sixth, so November sixth. So I'm just letting everyone know that it doesn't seem likely that this will make it to the council by that moratorium date. Uh, it'll, it's lifted ninety days from when it went into effect. It was voted on July, on July thirtieth. Thank you, Chris, for clarifying. It was signed on the sixth. The date of signature is when it goes into effect, thirty days from August sixth. I don't know. I said thirty? Ninety days. So hypothetically, that's November sixth, but with thirty-one days and thirty, I, I don't know. Let's say August sixth, just to be clear, but someone can do the math. Yeah, early November, y'all can do the math.
Item L, commission comments. Any commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. Sir, is there any, is there any update on the dredging on the north? I know all the landowners on Bayou Terrebonne got communication from the parish president. Uh, is there a status report that you know of in terms of the progress on that?
Um, I don't have any details, um, but I did see before this meeting, um. A news report on Channel Six, actually, that they had started removing debris from the, from Bayou Terrebonne. So it's from Bayou Gardens to Devil Swamp Road, Bayou Gardens Boulevard to Devil Swamp Road.
And any, any, any start date you had on the, I guess, the disaster recovery money that was committed to wastewater treatment and collection?
The, um, consulting firm, I believe, was selected, uh, you know, who's gonna be doing the plan. But I don't have a, uh, an actual start date of when that, those efforts will begin. I think they're, they're working on the contract right now.
Okay, who's the, who's the firm?
I knew you were gonna ask me that. I'll have to look it up.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
I have no comments. Public comments? Motion adjourned? Having a motion by Mr. Bill Yott, second by Ms. Sudey. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all for coming.